I'd like to call the Village of Webster Workshop, September 5th, 2017, to order. And I hope that all board members are present. Tonight we're going to...
There's a guy on the end.
All right. Tonight we're going to, the village business, have two things. And I'm going to switch the order in which they are there because the first one will be a little bit shorter than the second, I believe. So, first of all, Mr. Elder, a member of both Parks and Rec Committee and also our Preservation Commission, is going to give us an update on an information packet that we've put together to provide to those that are moving into the village. In fact, they met a couple today that are moving in. And this provided them with one of the things.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so, at the last meeting, we talked about a greeting packet for residents. So, I'm giving you a rough draft of that. But I'll explain why some of the stuff is not quite done yet. One is because I ran out of labels. But, so, we are, the idea would be to get information as to who has moved in. There's a variety of ways of doing that. And then, and then we would, yeah, Alex Stapleton. Do I really like Stapleton? I support him, I support him. The, so then, what we would do is, we'd have a packet of information. Excuse me. The little tiny slips of paper I'm giving you are the actual part of the...
Oh, yeah. Okay, good.
All right, so, the idea would be, the idea would be when somebody gets, actually, is moving in, they would get an envelope. And the envelope, they would open it up, and on the front of the envelope, it would say, one side would say, "Welcome to the Village of Webster," and the other side would say, "Welcome Packet." So, that's why the labels, you have to imagine the labels on the envelope. I just had a problem printing, so, okay, on labels. So, then, we may or may not put their name on the envelope, I'm not sure about that. I might just put the address. Because that might make them feel a little bit less like we somehow snooped on them and knew who they were before they, you know, people get funny about those things. So, but at least I can put the address on it. So, that would give us the ability to put one additional label on. If we did that, it would say, "To our neighbors at, you know, 15 Latimer." Okay. So, when they open the envelope, what they would see is a collection of material. The first would be a letter, which I want to go over in a little more detail in a second. The second would be the village trifold that I don't have copies of, but Darryl just showed, Darryl, did you show that to everybody? That's the one right there.
Yeah.
So, that would be number two. I don't actually have those to print. If I saw them, I'd have to get them from Village Hall, which is fine. Then, third, then we'd have the parks brochure, historic preservation brochure. This is not the main historic preservation brochure, though, because the main one is a double. This is a trifold. Unfortunately, in this envelope, we can only do trifles. So, I'm not, I'd like to resolve that problem, but it's, this is okay right now. And then, we'd have the Webster Museum card that I didn't get from Tom Pellet. I got a lot of them. And there's a lot more. And then, finally, we'd have some kind of bid brochure, which we would look to put in there in the future. Right now, I, they don't have one. So, I'm going to have to work with them and try to create a trifold brochure. Or, we could do something like the museum dig, which is just a third sheet. You know, it's a third sheet back and front. So, however they want to do it, up to that point.
What about adding some things from the businesses in the village?
Well, hopefully, the bid, hopefully, the bid brochure...
Yeah, if they don't have a brochure of anything from the businesses themselves. Urbino's free sell, you know what I mean?
Probably like coupons and stuff?
Like the welcome way.
I would have to get the bid to really, I would have to get the bid to supply that to me. That one, I have to readily admit to you that this is a, this is a more significant project than I had given it credit for. And what I, now, fortunately, I could pre-stuff like 100 of these at a time. That will get a lot of it out of the way. But, this distribution part of it's going to be a time-consuming thing, too. Because I'd like to not have the village pay the postage. That may be impossible sometimes, because there might be apartment dwellers that we might do. Not like, you know, that's something, that's the other thing, we have to decide, and I had to ask you to decide as a board, is what criteria do you want to use? Would it be everybody? Would it be people on major streets? Would there be anybody excluded from this? That's the other thing, we're talking about that. So, and obviously, the one thing we would know is, we can't give, we can't give it to people we don't know about. So, that's just something you're going to have to understand. If we don't have information about their, you know, that triggers us to know that they're a new resident, then we can't, we can't give, no. But if they call up, we could run something over to them. So, that's the limitation we're going to have. If somebody doesn't get it, it's not because we didn't like them, it's because we maybe didn't know about them. And that's just going to be a natural, something that actually happens, because a whole lot of information out there does not tell us when certain people, like, move into apartments, for instance. We just might not ever know. So, that's something we're going to have to accept. So, now, the reason I created this letter was because I wanted to have something that would kind of give people an idea of why we were doing it. So, this would, the idea would be this would come from Darryl, because he's the mayor. And so, the, and so, you could read it yourselves. "I appreciate your feedback, and I'd really like to get this, to get this started in no later than October. So, if it's possible, if you could review this for the last meeting in September, and if the board would be okay with coming back in, then..." If everybody has corrections, I could make those corrections. You probably want to at least take some kind of, have some kind of consensus on this, at least, or not take a vote to have this done, because it is a big deal. And then, this letter has two components. The first idea was to give people a nice overview of what's in the packet and why we're doing it. The second idea would be to give them links, because these days, so many people use the Internet to get their information, that what happened, that I felt that was important to at least lay out where these organizations' websites, and where, if possible, their phone numbers are. To give you an idea of how far we've come, though, there's a lot of organizations whose primary contact is not the phone anymore, it is their email address, or their website. So, that's what you're looking at here. So, I appreciate your input, obviously, to figure out what this would look like. I'd love to do it in color if the board was okay with that. Obviously, that's going to be a little bit more expense, but it does look a lot better. And I guess that's really about it, as far as this goes, so...
Suggestion?
Yeah.
There's a letter at the office that lists all the village's services and what they are.
Ah, another good one, okay.
That might be something you might want to include.
Darryl, is it in the, is it in the trifold that the village puts out? What services we provide?
The services? What we have, we have services offered by the village, the leaf, you can see that, all those things.
Not, well, not only just that, but, you know, the leaf pickup.
Passport.
Oh, I didn't look, look.
Here, let me...
The park guard, you mean?
No, it's not. This is the one the village, this is the one the village actually has.
You've got the one in...
Sure, the, this is the one the village actually has in its own stacks, in the village hall.
There's actually a more comprehensive list than just this.
Shooch or something.
I don't know the same, I don't know what the items on there actually are, but it's a thought.
Well, let's compare. Yeah, let's, one of the, one of the things we could do is we could compare the list that's in the village hall, and you could augment it on the trifold, which would be, you only have to have one piece of it. I also don't want to get so many pieces in there that I won't be able to look at them. So, that's the other. But, but we, this has, this is the beginning. I would anticipate this getting bigger and bigger as time goes on. So, you know, what we could do is have the, we could, you know, we could have it...
When I go, we were just talking about that first couple sentences where we're growing bean streets, or just sort of...
Open her some correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's going to be a few.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, the thing is, they're phasing out the one walks. So, there's going to be less and less of them, and maybe, there'd be none.
There'll be one this year.
Why'd they get rid of them?
Not there, but...
They're getting much less popular. So, that's the reason why they're thinking about phasing them out, or making them, like, once a year at most, so...
And then, to the top crawl, and do the...
But, I get your point. And, but again, I'm hoping that maybe in two weeks, you guys could give me input on how you'd like to fix this. I could send you this by email if you want, would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Okay. If I send you by email, would you do me a favor and send it back to me with your fixes?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll have, sure, thanks. And then, I'll have it done for you, and I'll have it done for you by the last meeting in September, so we'll get it again. Is that all right?
If we're on, we have to...
It'll be done by present, please.
Done, yeah. I think you've got some questions, sir, across the room.
All right, question?
I guess, one point, I guess, on the important contact information.
Yes.
You've got the business of urban district. I think the rest of them are pretty self-explanatory, but someone just moving in might not know the significance of the, you know, business.
Yeah, I guess...
From a resident's standpoint, you're going to say, for events, concerts, schedules, movies, things like that, and say what they do? Because if, if I didn't know what they did or how they contributed, I'd, like, all right, great, if I need to call them, but why would I have to?
Okay.
It might not know the other stuff that they do.
Can do, absolutely.
It might be nice to have a whole packet on the website, our website. So, when somebody new comes in, new resident, click on this link, and then all these different pages will come up.
That's a good idea, too.
And then, it's not, it's not just somebody that's been here, wants to see, hey, what's going on, they can click on it, too.
Oh, that's a really good idea.
So, you can sure what's in here, and just, you know, visit the link.
Well, you could, but...
And save lots of money.
Yeah. So, what do you think?
Well, how many people do you think are moving in? We had to determine the criteria, too.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that based on some of the information I've seen, you're actually going to be doing more than 200 people a year, 200 envelopes a year.
That's it.
People, people might be high, people's wrong number households.
It's going to be more. We get the new homeowners from the addressing office.
But I think if you get 200 households, it'll be a lot. Again, it's under your criteria.
I agree, but it's too much.
Well, but the thing is, if we plan high, I mean, you ask me...
Well, the criteria's over, it's not like it's time-paged either.
Right, exactly. Right. Yeah. So, Jerry, you're, you're looking, you have concerns, though?
Oh, no, no, sir, I'm fine, thank you.
Oh, really?
No, I'm good.
As far as delivery goes, so, I take a trip around the village once or twice a week. I could hand those out.
That'd be great.
That's perfect. And we cover all the streets, just to see what that...
Okay.
Or maybe we'll could do that. Distribute.
I don't think there's any, I mean, I think the distribution part of it is just a matter of finding someone or somebodies to go out and just distribute. But, I mean, the idea would be that I could probably tackle the prefab envelopes, then sticking a dress on it. That's not a big deal. And then, from there, it's just a matter of getting them out. And again, it's not really, it's not really a time, a horribly time-sensitive thing. If someone moves in and they get the packet in two weeks versus three weeks, it probably isn't a lot of a huge deal. Or one week versus, you know, 14 days, probably doesn't make a big deal, so...
There's still in packing, you don't get lost anyway.
Right.
That's true. Don't like...
Okay. I'm good.
Please, I like it.
I like it.
You guys give it to me. I'm just trying to execute it, though. But it's a, but it's a, so we need to get two additional brochures here. One is the villages, and one will be something with the bid. Jerry, what I might be able to do is get a, you know what I could do? If they gave me the front and explained what the bid did, which would help with Jake's point, and then the back that it gave links to local businesses? I don't know if I could fit them all in there, but, I mean, I might be able to do, like, Urbino's and their website. You know, I mean, there might be some opportunities there. So, the bid, the bid website, if they were to go to the bid website, they would find some of the businesses that actually have webs, you know, webpages right on the bid website, so...
Thank you, man.
Pretty soon, we're going to be having a great big open house for the fire department and all the stuff going on then. That would also be a good time to distribute stuff.
Yeah, whatever's available, sure.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And I'll work, Josette, I think, I'll work on that, too, because I think you have a point. We're concentrating so much on people that are new, the information, if it was online, could be there for people who were already here, who don't know all the stuff that we... You know, we make a lot of assumptions about what they know and what they don't know. Maybe they don't know. The other thing is, the website could have visited by someone in the town, but also give them the same information. Because we're not, we're not delivering, because, you know, logically, I think there's just short of 21,000, I think it's like, just let's start with 21,000 households between the town and the village, something like that. So, if you were to go with the same proportion, there must be, what, 2,000 in the village, maybe? Maybe? So, that makes 18,000 households in the town. So, if you think about it, there's a huge resource there, people could know more about the village. Okay. All right. Okay, I'll see you guys in the last meeting in September.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
And then, what we can talk about...
Okay, well, you got a question, too?
He just copied Darryl.
What? He just copied Darryl, okay.
I think that's something that was done in the past, or certainly is something that, for those who are moving in, would be a plus, for them to get to know the village a little bit more easily than months and years, finding it out, so... Next, then. We'll bring that up. You were talking about the last one in October.
Oh, in September, if it's okay.
In September, the 28th?
Yeah, I can definitely have stuff done. I won't, I won't be here the next meeting, so...
Then, at this point, I'd like to, I think all of you have met, have commented before, Mel Chant, from La Bella Associates, to give us an update on the wastewater treatment plant. And John, nice to see you. Jake, thank you for... Here, Kevin, nice to see you as well.
This is the right place to send the address to the board. I'm speaking to my panel. I'm not sure if everyone could see the board, and sort of about...
That would be, for the board, that would be the third to last page, I believe, in the packet that I turned up, we done.
So, I did send an electronic copy of the report to the mayor, and asked him to distribute to the board. Although I've got up here enlarged versions of some of the sheets that are in the report. So, you have these, should have these electronically. They're just, when you print them out on 11 and a half, sorry, 8 and a half by 11, they're a little illegible, especially some of the numbers and spreadsheets. So, I brought this along tonight, just so you could kind of point at things, and if there are any particular questions, it would be easier to see. If at any point, you know, there's something that you can't see in, people what have in front of you on the board, I can bring this out, and you can kind of go into more detail. I wasn't quite sure of the setting, so, I wanted to be flexible enough that you've got the opportunity to ask the questions you wanted to ask. So, I just want to start off, obviously, by saying thank you to the board for allowing me to come and give a presentation on the work that La Bella's been doing for this wastewater treatment plant study. I personally have been working on this for about 18 months or so, I believe. We were commissioned back in the spring of 2016. A little bit of history, I'm not sure if the board was around or remembers how this particular study got started, but back in 2015, La Bella was commissioned to do an evaluation of two specific components at the plant, or two specific types of issues. One was the structural integrity of the primary digester, which I'll talk about in a little bit more detail. And the other was looking at specifically energy efficiency upgrades that were potentially there. At the time, there was some thought about utilizing some of the side stream products in the form of the methane gas that's produced in the digesters, to potentially either produce electricity or produce heat for the plant and its processes. I understand that the study, the specific study on those two components was completed, and I believe, Jake, you were heavily involved in that. When the report was submitted to the board, I understand that there were some questions about how recommendations from that report fit into a larger evaluation of the treatment plant and your wastewater treatment options overall. So, that's what precipitated this more comprehensive study. And at the time, there were three specific alternatives that La Bella was asked to evaluate. One was looking comprehensively at the performance of the existing treatment plant, and what kind of upgrades would need to be done to bring it up to current standards. And then, two other opportunities, or two other potential options and alternatives we were asked to take a look at. One was potentially closing down the village's wastewater treatment plant and sending the wastewater flow to the town's treatment plant. And then, the other option was to take the flow instead of the town, what would it take to get it into the Monroe County pure water system? So, when we started looking at it, and given the scope that we had, obviously, evaluating one plan is one task. Evaluating two other treatment systems really wasn't within the feasibility of the study as it stood. So, I think there was some miscommunication when the project and study was set up in different expectations about what the report would convey. What I would talk to you tonight is about the comprehensive evaluation of the village's plant, and then a cursory review of the capital improvements needed to convey wastewater either to the town or to the county facilities. I don't have all the information, because an evaluation hasn't been done, either by the town or the county, on every single component that might need to be upgraded in order to take the village's flow there. But, what we found going through the process was that the capital, initial capital investment to convey the flow and also upgrade what components we knew would need to be upgraded at the town's facility and with the county, that initial capital cost far outweighs the initial capital cost of upgrading the village's own plant. So, if we were to look at this completely comprehensively, we'd want to evaluate all the different options and all the capacities for all three different alternatives. And that would obviously require a lot more investigation, a lot more evaluation for the town, the town's consultants, the county, the county's engineers as well. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. What I, we have been able to do for you is do that level of evaluation for the village's plan. And again, based upon what we understand, the immediate needs would be to upgrade the plant. That is probably about half of the cost or less than the initial capital cost to take it to the town and/or to the county. But I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. So, I don't know if the board is aware, but back in June, I was asked to provide a summary update of the evaluation. I submitted a memo to the then-mayor, John, and I believe that he distributed it to the board, and it was discussed at the June or July meeting. At that point, the evaluation of the, the majority of the evaluation was already complete. So, the report that you see in front of you today really doesn't differ that much in terms of the outcomes and recommendations. The numbers were slightly different. We were still waiting for refined costs from manufacturers, equipment manufacturers. And that's really what we've been working on over the last month, was just getting those numbers refined. But the outcome essentially is what you may be familiar with if you receive that memo back in June. So, I'm just going to recap that for you. Are there any questions before we go into that? Okay. So, when we started the study back in the spring of 2016, typically, how we would look at an evaluation is we would gather as much data about the performance of the existing facility, and then match that against the capacity that our current design standards require us to do if we were to design that facility from scratch. We'd also take a look at the condition of the existing structures and equipment. Obviously, the plant has been in operation for many, many years, and over that time, some things have been upgraded, other things have not. So, we'd want to get a baseline for where the plant stands today. We'd also look at what the potential for growth is for the particular community, and see how that should affect our capacity evaluation. Should we be designing for more capacity than we currently have? Or do we see that the transfer flows coming into the plant are decreasing? So, I would say that the majority of communities that we see in our service area, let's say, you know, around Rochester, Finger Lakes, they're either stable or they're declining. And the, looking at the population forecasts for the village, that's kind of similar to what we see over the next 20, 30 years. I think we looked at around about 4%, growth is what the Regional Planning Council is anticipating by 2040. So, it's modest growth, not very much growth. And some of that growth is offset by some of the reduction in flows that you have from your industrial facilities and commercial uses, most notably Xerox, and also the type of wastewater, the wastewater characteristics, so, kind of, you're picking that. So, some of that kind of offsets each other. So, that, like I said, that's how we would set out, looking at an evaluation like this. As we got into the evaluation, we understood that there are certain things that were happening at the plant right now, or over the course of that time, operational issues that probably did not reflect how the plant was supposed to operate, if everything was running smoothly. So, I noted a couple of these. We suspected that the tripling filter, which is the main secondary treatment process, the main biological treatment process, that that was not performing correctly. So, the operations staff flooded the filter as a way of cleaning out some of the potentially inert solids that potentially might be plugging the filter. We noted that there was a defective operation for the primary digester, and that led to the staff draining the digester, cleaning it, and discovering that some of the internal equipment was failing, most notably the gas piping had cracked. And that's a project that the treatment plant staff are working on, replacing that right now. One of the other things that we noticed, and this is kind of tying back to this data that we collect, the reason I brought that up, is that as we looked at the historical data, I think we went back to, as far back as 2010, 2013. Typically, we'd like to see maybe three or four years of data, so we can iron out any fluctuations. But, we noticed that some of the influent levels seem to be higher than we would expect to see for the types of flows that we were seeing. So, we did some investigation about how the data was being collected, and we found that the influent information that's being imported actually included some flow streams that we typically wouldn't see when we evaluate influent coming into a treatment facility. So, you have a sewer system that collects most of the wastewater and conveys it to the plant. In addition to that, you have, the village has been accepting bleach and septic over, you know, the past few years. So, that's another source of influent loading. And then, where the influent sampler currently is located also captures side stream return, which is, as the plant, as the wastewater flows through the plant, there are certain processes that happen, and some of the residue water that comes back can't be discharged to the effluent. So, it has to be recycled back to the head of the plant and re-treated. And the influent that's captured, captures some of that as well. So, if we were to compare our influent characteristics with another treatment plant's characteristics, it may seem off, because it doesn't, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So, this is something that, you know, while we were going through the evaluation, we were trying to make heads or tails of, you know, why this data seemed to be, seemed to be pointing to more loading than you would really, or I would anticipate seeing. And these are some of the factors that were applied to that. Now, we didn't have the luxury of being able to then go and test, retest, all of this data for the next three years. You know, obviously, there's a timeframe involved with this study. So, we, I asked, I worked with the treatment plant operators to collect flow from where I thought we should be collecting that, and then comparing that with the historical data. And if there was a discrepancy, you know, we would prorate that data that we hadn't been collecting to give us a better baseline to evaluate the treatment plant. Now, the reason I'm telling you all of this is that if we just took the historical data and it was skewed, the information was skewed high, that would lead us to recommend upgrades and improvements to your treatment plant that maybe you don't need, because you're basing it on higher numbers to be able to... So, I don't want to necessarily recommend millions of dollars' worth of upgrades to certain components if they're not actually necessarily needed. So, it's kind of a compromise, it's not an ideal situation, but I think it more reflects the real... but I think it more reflects the reality of what we're looking at as we look to the capacity of your treatment plant. And whether or not that is a viable option compared with, obviously, taking the treatment plant offline and sending it to neighboring jurisdictions. So that kind of sets the baseline of how we went into the evaluation. Are there any questions on that portion? So then, once we set that, then we could actually look at the calculations. And there's a whole series of calculations. There are design standards. I won't go into any of that. It's all in the report if you want to take a look at that. But ultimately, you know, it led us to look at what are the deficiencies with the existing plan? And then what we would recommend to bring those up to, you know, up to current standards if that was one of the alternatives that we're looking at. So I just want to give a list of the deficiencies that we looked at, or that we identified. As I mentioned, the village had been taking septicage and bleach aid over the years. The point where that's applied to the treatment plant, there is no control over the flow of that into the influent. So what I mean by that is when a septic hauler brings that in and discharges into, there's a manhole with a connecting pipe that goes into it, when he discharges it, that goes right into your treatment process. So if there is a high concentration, high strength loading, the operators don't currently have a way of releasing that in a slower or more controlled manner. And that potentially could upset the treatment processes downstream. Another issue that we identified was that there was some issue with the grit settling facilities. Grit is the name we give to very small, like stones and rocks that get transferred through the flow. And over time, that builds up either in the sewers or in the channels and the tanks. And it can be a maintenance issue. It can also be a wear issue for pumps, for example. And it may cause premature failure of some of the mechanical equipment. So that was one of the issues we saw. It brought to my attention that grit was actually settling out before it got to the facility that was actually designed to remove the grit. So that kind of points to some hydraulic issues that we'd want to take a look at addressing. In the influent building itself, which contains the preliminary treatment, you can see that the, there's mold and mildew growing on the walls. So that kind of points to the heating and ventilation is probably not working the way it should be. So that's another issue we'd want to address. The pre-erration tanks, these are tanks which are before the primary clarifier tanks. Essentially, these are tanks where oxygen is applied. And the primary reason for pre-erration, more times than not, is when you have industrial wastes, it can help to remove odors. It can also help to, it can help the biological treatment process and it can also help with settling in the primary clarifiers. I wasn't privy to the actual design of those tanks and why the, or how the pre-erration system was designed. But one thing we did notice is that currently the plant supplies air constantly to that process. And I don't think it's ever been evaluated whether that air is needed to treat the wastewater that it needs to treat today, given that, as I mentioned, the industrial strength wastewater may not necessarily have been come, or is, may not necessarily be coming to the plant today as it once may have been. So as Xerox has changed its processes and changed the flow, the type of flow that it sends to the plant, maybe that process isn't needed anymore or maybe it doesn't, isn't needed as frequently as it's used. And obviously, when you apply air through blowers, you're using energy. So it's an energy saving, potentially, to look at that. So we would look at seeing whether or not we could run the treatment plant and get the same, or get the required quality of effluent without using that facility. We have, there's a chemical that's applied to the wastewater called ferric chloride. That helps to reduce phosphorus loadings that go out into the effluent. Phosphorus, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but it's a nutrient that when it gets into the watercourses, it can cause you trubecation and build up algal growth. I'm sure you've kind of read on the news about cyanotoxins and other unwanted growth in like Erie parts of some of the Finger Lakes. Phosphorus and nitrogen are two nutrients that are controlled by the D E C. And with the villagers' plan, as I said, ferric chloride is the chemical that's applied to remove that phosphorus or a significant quantity of that phosphorus from the wastewater that gets through. That's currently being applied at the primary clarifiers. So when you apply that chemical, there's a reaction, it creates a sludge and that's removed from the clarifiers. And we were discussing some of the reasons why the tripling filter may have a plugged condition. It could be that some of these inert solids that we are generating due to the phosphorus removal may be escaping, getting into the tripling filter and then plugging up the tripling filter. Typically, when we design phosphorus removal systems, chemical systems, we usually apply those after the biological process. So before the final process. So that's another item that we may look at. It's not necessarily an issue right now, but when we look at the performance of the tripling filter, it's something to consider. And as I'll talk about, you recommended improvements, there may be an opportunity to address that while we look at other improvements. We noted that there were some deficiencies with the current chemical storage building, most notably the secondary containment. So that's something we want to take a look at. Probably one of the biggest issues that I noted about like throughout the plan was how the tripling filter pumps work. So wastewater flows through the facility by gravity through to a point in front of the tripling filter. And from there, it's pumped up to a different level, which allows it to flow by gravity through the tripling filter, through the final clarifiers and then out through the effluent. In order to get the best treatment out of the tripling filter, we actually recirculate flow that's gone through the filter once. And there's design guidelines to how many times you want to recirculate that flow. The flow, the recirculation flow is obviously, I should say, the recirculation ratio, which is the ratio of the recirculation flow to the influent flow to the plant, is, it fluctuates obviously as the influent flow fluctuates. Right now, the operators have limited control to meet optimum recirculation ratios because only one pump, there's two pumps in that pump station right now. They should be able to pump simultaneously from these engines if there's a high rate coming into the station. Right now, the electrical setup is that only one pump can operate at any one time. So there are times when I've noticed there's been a modest flow coming into the plant, but yet you can't get the recirculation that you need because you can't start up the second pump and run it simultaneously. So that's one of the, that's one of the things that I'd want to take a look at. It's concerning to me because I've seen, I've been to the plant and seen where if those pumps can't keep up with the influent flow and the recirculation flow, there's actually a weir that bypasses the secondary treatment. So then you're not treating that secondary flow at all. Now, that's supposed to happen as a failsafe if you have large storms inundate the facilities. But when we've looked at it, even at moderate flows, it seemed to be bypassing offset conditions. So to me, that seems like, that seems to indicate that we're not pushing enough flow through the tripling filter and it's therefore bypassing over the effluent weir and going out without secondary treatment. So one of the things that the plant operators have noticed is that the effluent, the effluent numbers when it comes to biochemical oxygen amount and total suspended solids have been higher over the last few years. That may be, I'm not 100% certain, but that may be a contributing factor is that we're sending flow out that hasn't been through the secondary treatment process. So to me, that's probably one of the biggest issues that should be addressed by any operator for the treatment facility. Some other issues, the waste sludge pumps, although they do work without issue right now, we have a concern about their redundancy. There is one pump that's dedicated to the primary clarifiers and there's another pump that's dedicated to the finals. If those pumps fail, then the operators can't pump sludge. And usually, the operators do a great job of getting them back online within a timely manner. But, you know, it would probably make sense to add in some redundancy there. Maybe connect the two systems so that if one pump is down, you can pump sludge from either the primary or the final clarifiers using the other, using the other pump. So we maybe look at replacing the pumps. The pumps right now are air-driven, which means there are compressors, there are housing pump and blower building. That's another piece of equipment that has to be maintained. It's loud, it generates heat. So maybe we look at a system that doesn't use air compressors, maybe an electrically driven pump system may alleviate some of those concerns as well. I mentioned the study that was done in 2015. At the time, the structural engineer who investigated didn't have an opportunity to get inside the tank. Because the tank was down to address the equipment issues this summer, we asked the engineer to come back in and take a look on the inside to see whether their recommendations would be any different from the recommendations from the 2015 report. Fortunately, you know, taking a look on the inside, they didn't see anything additional to what they already, what they had already flagged up in terms of what they would recommend as improvements. So essentially, what was recommended before, we're carrying forward as a recommendation for this evaluation. And then, just like I mentioned before, the age of the equipment. There's a lot of equipment that's old and it's falling apart. The primary clarifier stump pipes are an example of this. You can see it's corroded, you know, it's beyond its useful life. There are, you know, some pump systems like tripling filter pumps, they're not manufactured anymore. So I don't know if the operators have had difficulty getting parts for them. But if a complete rebuild needed to be done, you know, you wouldn't be able to get them simple. So the next time those pumps are upgraded, it makes sense to replace them with a more modern system, which may also increase energy efficiency. There are concerns about the digester heating system, which were brought up in the energy evaluation from the 2015 report. And then some miscellaneous pumps, heating ventilation, A C systems, lighting systems and some miscellaneous structural repairs. So that's the long version of really the biggest items that we identified that we'd want to address in an initial capital project. And I'll get on to what I mean by that in a little while. But I, before I get any further, are there any questions about the deficiencies that we identified? Was there anything that I missed asking?
About an upgrade on the skater system?
On the skater system? That was something that I know John and I talked about. Skater in relation to the recycling or the recirculation flow. I think that's probably something that would be addressed when we replace the tripling filter pumps and upgrade the controls of the tripling pumps. Otherwise, John, Jake, I didn't hear anything that you were necessarily looking for upgrades with the facility. From what I understand, so skater, if you're not familiar, it stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. It's basically the remote control of the facility. So back when these plants were built, a lot of the control was manual and the plants functioned because of the expertise of the operators. As technology's improved and as we get into a point where, you know, a lot of operators are retiring and they're taking that institutional knowledge with them, a lot of plants are moving to more sophisticated controls, which let essentially a computer take over the operation of the plant. You know, there are different schools of thought about how much control you give to a computer versus making sure that your operators understand how the plant operates. But there's a balance between how much control you want to provide and how much convenience you want to provide. So then your operators are free to perform other functions within the plant. So as I mentioned, you know, that wasn't something that was particularly flagged up to us as being a potential issue. There's always more that you could do. And obviously, the more that you do, the more that those costs involved in that. But like I said, you know, there was nothing other than the recirculation control from an operational standpoint that it was really kind of flagged to us.
Recently, we went through a board and they're having trouble replacing the boards because they're so old.
Okay, then that would be.
Something that you weren't aware of at the time.
Yeah. So that would be a condition issue. And if that wasn't picked up, then that would be something that we would be replacing as well. But we don't, I don't have that cost in what's been presented in the report from right now. And as you know, as I mentioned, you know, we've been working on this study for, you know, well over a year. And as we've been going through it, things happen at the plant because it's an age where things start to fail. And, you know, we're kind of chasing ourselves a little bit to try and get you a set of recommendations that make sense. But that changes every single day. So at some point, we have to draw a line in the sand and say, from this point forward, this is what we would recommend. But I'm saying to you that we would also want to continue to look at what doesn't get upgraded and keep an eye on, you know, things as they progress. Because, you know, some things have been repaired, rehabilitated over the years and you've been able to squeeze some extra life beyond the original design life. That may get you 10, 15, 20 years, who knows? But know that it's beyond the intended design life. And if there are, you know, if something happens, then that potentially could be, you need an emergency investment, like the $100,000 that you're spending on the gas piping and digester. In addition to the capital evaluation, I will finish that piece out, but just want to get to this piece at the end. We also put together an asset investment schedule. And that is related to the recommended alternative, which in this case is rehabilitation of the existing plant. That looks out 25 years and looks at some of the things that might need to be invested over that timeframe. So most of the times when we do an alternatives comparison, we're looking at what needs to be spent now and not necessarily what needs to be evaluated later. If you're to do a true lifecycle cost comparison, you want to go out to essentially the end of, let's pick a point, the end of the design life of the improvements that you're proposing now and see what else would need to be done across that. So that when you decide to set your user rates, for example, or however it is you generate revenue to keep the plant going, that you've accounted for that. So I will go into that a little bit more detail. It's one of the things that, it's one of the spreadsheets that was included in the report. But that's kind of an overview of the deficiencies of the plant and the recommendations that we'd look at. So that was really our alternative one. So having gone through the capacity evaluation, condition evaluation, you know, it came up with this list of improvements that we would look to make in the near term. So that became our alternative one. And that's actually, those elements are what's shown on this figure here. This is figure 5.1 in the report.
Can I ask a question before you go?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but if, if we're looking at these improvements, these recommendations that you had and you're projecting, I mean, we're kind of limited. We have two developments that are coming online now or shortly, within, I think, two or three years. I mean, one year, two, three years. Beyond that, there may not be a whole lot more in terms of residential. There's one area that is south of here. There's another nine acres that are zone industrial. I don't know what will happen to that. But, and I don't know what's coming in from zero. But, and I don't know what's coming in from zero. But you're talking about a 4% growth. Is the plant currently designed, you wouldn't need a third clarifier, a fourth, you know, pre...
From a wastewater treatment perspective, from the design calculations, the capacity calculations, there are very few items which aren't designed to current capacity standards. There are a couple that are, like there's concern about the capacity of, for example, the digesters, the primary digester. But you also have to understand that the design standards are conservative based too. You know, they're what we design around when we build a new treatment facility. We actually have experience utilizing the facility that we have, and we know that we get good treatment. So that also has to come into play into this evaluation. We can't just say, oh, you know, the design standards say that you don't have capacity, therefore you need to build, you know, a third digester, for example. There are lots of ways that you can look at increasing the efficiency of what you have. So for example, if primary digestion was an issue, we don't have a complete mixing system. We have what's called passive mixing, at least that's what the standards call it. So that may be an opportunity where we install equipment inside an existing structure as opposed to building a new structure. But again, you know, this is one of the questions that I was kind of battling with is, do we have the right data to begin with? Because if our historical data is leading us to say that we don't have capacity, but we are concerned about the veracity of that data, again, you know, like I said, I don't want to necessarily be recommending certain things for you that you don't need. So the standards are recommended standards. By and large, you know, if you deviate from the recommended standards, you have to have a good reason for that. But I think that, you know, one of the ways that we would say that we have capacity is that we've been running the treatment facility, at least in that portion with the sludge handling, you know, that is an issue in terms of the volume of sludge that you're producing, it hasn't been an issue. And like you say, the growth is modest, as I mentioned, you know, the actual effect on the treatment plan is probably a wash in terms of the amount of loading that's coming in. So over the next 25, 30 years, I don't see that necessarily being an issue from a capacity So looking at the recommended improvements, you know, a lot of it's just rehashing what I talked to you about during the deficiencies. There are some things that we would look to combine. So for example, where we talked about there being, you know, a need to provide better control of the septicage, and also a need to provide a better housing situation for the chemical feed, for the phosphorus removal, we could combine that into a single structure, for example, where part of the structure is dedicated to septicage receiving, part of it is dedicated to chemical storage. That would make it, we could make some side improvements to bring our septic hauling trucks and our chemical delivery trucks into a more convenient place, a more convenient location. You know, right now, the feed into the ferrochloride bob tank runs across on the pipeline because there's really no way to get to that building. So we want to move that into a more convenient location. So there are opportunities like that. But by and large, you know, all of these, all of these recommended improvements are essentially what actually kind of got over with. So do you have any questions on that piece?
We got one question.
Yes.
The taxpayers have been flipping the bill for all this. How come New York State or there's no money coming in generated from, if you look at, if you look at Syracuse and that area, they all got grants. Binghamton got grants, Buffalo got grants. From Rochester to Binghamton, there were two grants. If you go over towards Syracuse, there was 43.
That is something that happens all the time. I don't know the mechanics of how they fund it. I do know that we looked at potential funding for the upgrades here. And, you know, we have a department at Lovella that helps our clients, you know, solicit funding from the various sources available in the state. But I have to be honest, you know, some of that is political patronage, you know.
That's why I mentioned...
Jake Harris is probably an ideal...
So, cool.
Matt, Matt would be...
That's why I brought it up here.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Matt would be bringing it to the group.
Yeah. I know a lot of people who work in the, you know, for the funding agencies, and most of the people who do that work on the ground, you know, they're trying to do the best thing for the communities, you know, they're very invested in the communities, and, you know, they do do, they do a good, they do do a good job, they're trying to get money to where it's needed, but it doesn't always filter down to where it's supposed to go. And unfortunately, you know, one of the things that we talk about a lot with the funding situation is that those, the formulas are kind of set up to address those which have the highest environmental issues, needs. And unfortunately, that's kind of somewhat commensurate with some communities which haven't maintained their treatment facilities over the years. So those, it's almost like you're penalized if you do a good job of looking after the treatment facility, because you don't get any funding, because your treatment plant's working well.
Right.
So these are, you know, these are a lot of discussions that come up, you know, like I say, I don't know, you know, all of that behind that, but I hear the same kind of questions come up all the time.
We're all taxpayers, I mean.
We have it applied. You know, we tried to get on the IUP, or the IUP after 2015, I think we were successful, but we were very, 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 very low, because one of the major components of it is trying to make sure you have your, you basically have to prove that you don't need the money before they'll consider it.
Right, you have to have a problem.
Bond in, bond in place, everything's set to go, and then they'll consider, and they have to move you up on the list, because they want to know when you hand out this money that it's really seriously gonna, it's gonna take place.
Fully seriously asked for it, and now you have digesters that fail.
Glenn and Jake, I'd like to move on with the presentation that's here. Monetary costs are not covered, and I'm going to do that. Right now, I don't know what you're going to have.
So the next sheet I have here, moving on to the other alternatives we evaluated. So we, the first alternative, alternative two, was to look at what would it take to shut down the villagers' facility and convey the flow to the town's facility. Now, you're probably aware that the town has, they have commissioned a study of their own, their own treatment facility. They have issues with their own facility. It's the same vintage as the village's, and they have a number of issues that they have to address. Back in September of last year, they received an engineering report, which they provided to the village. We reviewed that as, as part of looking at this alternative, to see whether or not they allowed for any capacity increase at their facility. What exists at the town's plan essentially is two different treatment, it's like two different treatment plants on one site. And I haven't gotten an answer of why this was designed this particular way. My understanding is that D E C required essentially that what facilities you have at the village plan needs to be mirrored at the town plan. So you get this really interesting situation where you have an activated sludge, which is a kind of treatment facility, which is what the town uses to treat their flows. And you have a tripling filter plant, which is exactly the same, the tripling filter's exactly same dimensions and construction. It was constructed at the same time the village improvements were made back in the 60s. To my knowledge, that second train has never been used, or it's been turned on once or twice, but it's never really been truly used to treat village flow. My understanding was built as a backup in case that there was any kind of issue potentially if Xerox overloaded the treatment capacity and they needed to immediately send flow to a second treatment facility. Now, that doesn't necessarily make sense, because a biological treatment process requires time to build up, and inconsistent flows and loadings for it to function effectively. So I don't necessarily buy that argument, but the reality is that's what the town has in its facility. Now, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the IMA of the town. In the IMA, the 1979 IMA, it talks about the distribution of costs for constructing and maintaining those components that are at the town's facility. And I know that some of the board members went to a town meeting where they talked about, like, we listened to the town's engineer talk about some of the required improvements. And I guess one of my fears was that, you know, one of the improvements would immediately commit the village to spending $3 million on upgrading the secondary clarifiers, because that's one of the components that needs to be addressed. Even though the village doesn't send flow to the town, now, the IMA compels the village to contribute towards that. Now, the town obviously doesn't want to impose that on the village if it's not necessary. But there are some improvements they're looking at, for example, the emergency generator. Again, if the village were to send any of its flow to the town and require the use of its pumps, then that generator would be required, you know, as a backup. So the village is committed to spending some money at the town's plan. Now, we weren't anticipating when we went into the study that we'd have to evaluate or reevaluate the town's facility, but we found that in order to give you an answer as to whether or not they had the capacity to treat the village flows, the village flows, not what currently goes to the town, we had to see what they were recommending in terms of upgrades. So that's all kind of in the report. The longer the shorter it is, they currently, or the town's engineers recommended a $16.25 million project, upgrade their facilities. And that doesn't include any of the village's flow as it currently relates to. So whatever they would need to do at that facility to treat what currently comes into the village plan would be in addition to that. So we've kind of batted around a few ideas as to how that would be best served. I think the most kind of shovel-ready way of doing that would be to utilize the structures that currently exist at the town plant, so utilize the tripling filter, the pumps, the secondary clarifiers, although in this case, the secondary clarifier would need to be rebuilt because it's in disrepair right now and the equipment doesn't work. But there are also other facilities that aren't accounted for, that you have at the village plan, that you don't have at the town plant. So for example, the headworks, you don't have sufficient screening, we don't have sufficient grit removal. We also, the town's evaluation didn't look at the solid handling, the sludge handling portion of the facility. So I, we have no data, information to see whether or not those facilities are adequate to handle the additional loading that the village would send to the town if it were to send all this load. So, you know, we put some numbers out there just to kind of show you what difference in cost would be versus, you know, upgrading the village's plan. I think the latest numbers are somewhere like $11.6 million that would be incurred by the village, because this would all be to treat the village's flow and loadings, in addition to the $16 million that the town has to spend on its own facilities. So it, from a technical perspective, it doesn't make any sense to have two separate types of treatment plants on the same location. If the village and the town truly got together and said, we want to do a joint project, then what I would recommend, you know, I'm not the town's engineer, I can't speak for them, but what I would recommend is basically blow up what they've got and have a completely different system that has the flexibility to address any fluctuations in flow and loadings over the next 25, 30 years. But like I say, I'm not the town's engineer. Their report looks at, you know, kind of like what we've been looking at the village's plan, making the best use of what they've got. So retrofitting some of the treatment facility, the secondary treatment process. But yeah, I think, you know, if that was really what the village and town wanted to do, my recommendation would be to start new and build a treatment facility that addresses both communities' needs.
How much would that cost?
I haven't evaluated that. So all I can tell you that it would be somewhere between, you know, what they have currently plus the, you know, eleven and a half million dollars, whatever that costs. My guess is it would come in under that, but I don't know. We haven't really evaluated that. So, and we're talking about, you know, the average flow, the average design capacity for both facilities is seven and a half million gallons. The town has the speedies permit, the discharge permit, and that is what the discharge permit is rated for, seven and a half million gallons. The way that that's distributed between the town and the village is the town has an allocation of five million gallons and the village has two and a half million gallons. But that's just an average day basis. When you take the peak flows, which is inclusive of whatever happens when, you know, there's a storm event, we're looking at somewhere in the region of 23 million gallons per day that need to be treated. So the process would have to account for that at the town's facility. So right now, we're looking at around 7.5, I think is our design peak flow for treatment at the village. And that's high. I mean, it's a peaking factor of about four to five times what your average flow is currently. And that, you know, something that's kind of come to my attention in the last three or four weeks is that Xerox is obviously a major contributor to your flow. And full disclosure, we do work for Xerox in other areas. They recently asked us to take a look at potentially whether their facility has, their site has an issue with what we call inflow infiltration, I N I, essentially stormwater getting into sanitary sewers. And if you take a look at the readings, I know Jake, you sent me some numbers, there's a big discrepancy of how much they use in terms of water and how much they discharge through the meter that comes into the village. So as we talk about, you know, future growth and capacity potential, that may be an area where we gain back some of that capacity of the village plan, because we don't treat as much stormwater that comes in from Xerox. But that's all kind of in the early stages to identify whether that is or isn't a potential issue. So yeah, like I said, you know, a lot of these things kind of come into play. So this is, I mean, this just shows you the outfall as it exists. Because currently, flow goes by gravity from the village plant to the town site, we would continue to utilize the existing pipe, this alternative is the one that was pursued. And then at the treatment plant, at the village, at the town's plant, we would put a pump station just to lift the wastewater enough to flow by gravity through that train there. Other than that, you know, as I mentioned, you know, the other treatment components would really replicate, you know, the kind of improvements that we're talking about at the village site. It's just, there'll be more cost involved because you've been in brand new areas. So are there any questions on the town alternative?
So the, just to, it seems like we would do, should we do this? That the, our, our treatment plant would become a pump station.
Why? Actually, it wouldn't even become a pump station because it will flow by gravity through the site. We'd do some higher dimensions, yeah.
All of the existing materials there, all of the existing structures.
So in our cost estimate, we've allowed for demoing the existing plant essentially. You know, the D E C would want to essentially apply a, well, that's difficult to say because you're not a regulated plant, you don't have a speedies permit, but I think by and large, you're basically regulated, you're monitored as if you were, as if you had your own speedies permit. But I would imagine that the D E C would want to see the same kind of level of closure, which would mean making sure that, you know, nothing gets into the sewer system, you know, gathering the structures, allowing sort of, obviously cleaning them out to make sure there's no environmental hazards, and then backfilling the tanks, all that kind of stuff. So there's, there's some allowance for that though into the cost estimates for any of those alternatives.
That will be the same.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? So for the county option, alternative, there's actually two options we looked at in terms of routing. So to give you a brief overview, the county operates in a pure water system. And a pure water system is a collection of districts. It's kind of unique in Webster, because you have the town and the village, and it's noticeable when you look at the service area for the county, that the largest portion of Marin County isn't served by the pure water system. Right now, there is flow that runs through the town and goes into what's called the Arundhat Bay South Central District. Get the full title of it. But essentially, what happens is the town of Penfield, a certain number of the town of Penfield users are connected to the county. And I think the, because of how this is all structured, some of the town... And I think the, because of how this is all structured, some of the town users also get involved in that. But essentially, there's a sewer that runs down Bay Road. And there's a diversion structure at Bay of Bacchus. And water basically gets split. Some goes over to the town's sewer system and then gets treated at the town facility, and some goes towards the pure waters district. That continues down to Lake Road, comes down, allowed, down to a pump station on the Sandbar, it's called the Sandbar Pump Station, gets pumped underneath the Aron Bay outlet into the Lake Shore Interceptor Sewer, and that takes it eventually to the Van Luyen Treatment Plant. So when we look at this potential alternative, we met with the county to see whether we've got, you know, if it was feasible, technically feasible, and what kind of upgrades we would need to do, would we need to provide upgrades, would there need be upgrades to the county's treatment facility, to their sewers, to their pump stations? By and large, the Van Luyen Treatment Plant is much, much larger than any other treatment plant in this area. And the county has said that there is no concern in terms of capacity from what types of loadings the village is potentially, would potentially send to them. Same thing with the Aron Bay pump station, they have enough capacity to handle the flows there. Where they did flag up a potential issue is the electrical interceptor, apparently it runs very full when they have rain vents. So they haven't done any flow monitoring to see the actual capacity with it and whether or not that would, they would be able to accommodate the potential seven and a half M G B the village consented them. So this evaluation is not complete in that we don't have that information. But whatever information we have is essentially based upon what kind of infrastructure we would build to get it from the village site to at least a point where it discharges into the Lake Shore Interceptor. So there are two ways that we looked at doing that. The first is to come down, this is probably the most direct route, to come down Clem Road to the diversion structure, upsize the existing sewer to take the additional flow down to the Sandbar Pump Station. Sandbar Pump Station doesn't have the capacity to carry the village's flows, that would need to be upgraded, expanded and upgraded. And that potentially would mean a new force main to take that flow underneath the outlet because the pipe that goes over there right now doesn't have the capacity to take that flow. So all told, that option is around about ten and a half million, those are the numbers to that I have in the report. It's, I guess, it's the most direct option, but it means disruption of the existing services because you have to upsize existing infrastructure with the sewers and the pump station. The other alternative we looked at looks really only at taking the village's flows. And this was something that actually the county suggested because we talked about the feasibility of upgrading the Sandbar Pump Station, and they said, well, if you're going to pump it all the way from the village site anyway, you may as well basically build your own pump station to pump it all the way. So that's kind of what this represents. Instead of a gravity sewer, you have a twenty-four inch force main that runs down Shoemaker Road, Herman Road, Bosberg Road. Now, I also have the elevations here, and you see there's a big dip right there. So at this point, we would also, we'd need to put another pump station there to get over that change in elevation. Then that would continue. This is all force main, a new directional draw again underneath the outlet and then connecting you to the Lake Shore Interceptor. This one's slightly more expensive, mostly because you have to build a second pump station. So this is probably around about eleven point six million dollars just in capital cost. So any questions?
Your first option, going along Clem and connecting to the existing one instead, the town, would be connecting into something that would come from Penfield or?
I think it's.
And you said the town does send some, right?
Yes, we wouldn't be connecting to the town infrastructure. I think the infrastructure is, I'm not sure the ownership. I mean, it's, the county's infrastructure of that, essentially, but I don't know if there's an agreement with the town, the county, with town owners who maintains the sewer, even though it carries pure, I'm not sure how the arrangement is set up. But yeah, I mean, that's, it's something that would need to be looked at if that was the, if that was the alternative that was selected. So are there any questions on those alternatives?
Well, those alternatives, consider if we, if it went to the town or went to the county after the infrastructure is built, when everything was in place, is it still considered the village maintains a collection system or do those collection systems go to the corresponding utility that the flow goes to?
My, well, as far as the county goes, my understanding is how it's operated with other communities that have mothballed their treatment plants and sent their flow, converted them into pump stations like Spencerport or Churchville, I think was one, another one. I think that the town or the village is still responsible for their own collection system. And I don't know the mechanics of the rates, you know, how that's all split up, but that's something that would all have to be discussed with the community. Now with the town, you know, that's something that would have to be hashed out in the IMA. So I don't have an answer for that because that's really kind of the next step is once you decide which alternative, which option is the one that you want to pursue, then you start talking about how do you make that work, right? So from my perspective, and as I mentioned in the report, you know, and as I said, we don't have all the information that we would like to have to do a full lifecycle comparison for all of these alternatives. So the recommendation that we have in there is purely based on initial capital cost. But I believe because it's not close from an initial capital cost standpoint, unless there is some overriding reason that's not financially based, that the village would want to go into partnership with the town or the county. From purely technical perspective, it seems like the lowest cost, lowest initial cost option is the one that you'd want to look at as the preferred alternative. And as I mentioned, you know, we've, I'll talk about this now, the asset investment schedule. This only represents the initial outlay. And over the course of the next twenty-five, thirty years, there are going to be more expenditures to upgrade and replace things. And that applies also to the town's facility and it also applies to the county's facility. So even though what I'm going to present to you, I have what I'm calling the initial capital cost and then a future project cost at some point where, you know, things at the village's facility need to be replaced and upgraded, those kinds of costs will also be incumbent upon if you go with another alternative. It's just, we can't evaluate that at this point because we don't have that data, we don't have that information. Okay? So with that, as I mentioned, you know, based on initial capital cost, looks like the upgrade of the village's facility is the preferred alternative. This is probably, I know you hardly see this from where you are, also in the report, probably a little too small printed out for you to see there. I just want to run through how we put together this asset investment schedule. So, and I kind of described the process in the report too, but essentially, we're looking at lifecycle costs. So we're looking at what is the total impact on the sewer fund. So we take what you have existing, we essentially analyze what we're changing with these new upgrades. You know, some of it may be cost savings, some of it may be cost adders, and how does that spread out? So the components of that, essentially what goes into your sewer fund is you have debt service, you have operating costs, you have maintenance costs, and you have what we call, in the industry, we call it short-lived asset costs. And short-lived assets are essentially any piece of equipment or any component of a process which requires a significant outlay over a tight period of five, let's say five to twenty years, essentially within the lifespan of the overall process, but doesn't require a full replacement, if that makes sense. So for example, if you have a system that has pumps in it, and the pumps need to be replaced every ten years, but the system life is twenty-five years, you would replace those pumps twice as short-lived asset prices. And I'll get into why we separate those out in a minute. So with the debt service, we start with your existing sewer fund budget, and we break that out and we see, okay, what do you have that's current and what do you have that's going to continue? So we look at debt service, for example, and see, you know, for a conservative aspect, and just continuing that debt service out throughout the entire period now. The treasurer may be able to tell me that, you know, we expect to retire this amount of debt after ten years or fifteen years, and we can adjust that to account for that. But right now, it reflects, this is an annual cost that is going to go out towards the end of the evaluation period. Then we look at debt service from our initial capital project, which in this case, I'm assuming if we were to start working on that project this year, we'd go to construction in 2019. So we start incurring that debt service in 2019 or be 2020, whenever that, whenever that happens. And then, as I mentioned, there's the initial project cost and then a future project cost. So what we try to do is lump together as many items which need to be done at a certain time, or, let me take a step back. When we look at a piece of equipment or a process, we talk to the manufacturers and get a handle on what the lifespan of that equipment and process is. And we look at that from the perspective of when it's installed from day one, they may expect it to last twenty, twenty-five years. We also look at it from the perspective of where you are today, so that if you have a process that was installed, let's say thirty-five years ago, but you renovated it or did some other component upgrades, you know, fifteen years ago, that extends that life by another thirty-five years, then we take that into account. So just because a process was installed twenty-five years ago or more, and it has a component life of twenty years or a design life of twenty years, we wouldn't say, let's replace that right now because we know you've done work to it and we know you've extended the life of that. Our goal is to try and use as much of the existing process as we can and for as long as we can to minimize cost. So we look at how these things are all spread out by the recommended lifespan, and you can see at the top, these are all the years that we would look to incur that cost. Now, it doesn't make sense to have small capital projects every single year. Sometimes it makes more sense to combine those into a larger project that potentially might lead to better financing when we look at that. So these are, these are the types of projects that it would be too expensive for you to expect to put away money for on the, for your operating budget. So this is stuff that you would need to fund through debt. But again, you know, we want to keep it simple and apply it up to as few debt offerings as we can of a large spending project. So in this case, in this scenario, we actually have two, we've broken it up into two future projects, one that occurs in year fourteen, which would be 2030, and then one that occurs in year nineteen, which would be 2035. Now, obviously, when we're projecting out to 2041, who knows what's going to happen, right? I mean, the costs could go up, go down, you know, you might have other things that you need to advise. So this is all somewhat of an academic exercise, but I want you to understand the process that we go through to kind of develop this and how you can utilize that as you look to a budget moving forward. So that's the debt service component. The operations component is typically, you know, we look at specifically energy usage and consumables, so like oil, well, maybe not oil, well, like chemical consumption, so ferro, right, for example, the phosphorus removal. So we take a look at what all of the different processes you have, you have in your plan. We look at, we switch out those processes that we're replacing with new equipment, or we add new equipment, so for, for a septic receiving station, you know, all different types of things, and then we rebuild that cost, the operating cost, and look at what does that, how does that change your operating budget? Now, best types of projects would reduce your operating costs because you have more efficient equipment, you know, you have more efficient designs, so you're not utilizing blowers when you don't need to, this kind of thing. So that's kind of where we'd like to get to, but it doesn't always get that way. So, you know, the operating costs end up being what they are, and that's kind of what we assume. We take the maintenance costs out. In this case, we're looking, I look at maintenance as things like that you have to do on a regular basis from like a one to three or five-year timeframe. So every time you have to lubricate, you know, specific components, you know, replace bearings, I think as part of that, you know, for rotating machinery, all that is kind of incorporated into what we call our maintenance costs. So then, these are annual costs, essentially, they get spread out relatively evenly across the life of the schedule. When we look at short-lived assets, that's much more like the debt service costs, they occur at certain periods in time, but we can't always dictate, you know, when they occur. We can ask the manufacturer for their recommendations for when they think these components need to be rehabilitated, but they're only guesses. And a lot of manufacturers are going to tell you that, oh yeah, you'll never have to touch this once you install it. And sometimes that's true, but in other cases, you find there's equipment that you need to replace a lot more frequently than you do. So we kind of take the average of that and then we apply that when that needs to be done roughly on the timetable that they suggest, but we also look at what the impact is on the overall budget. So the thing I want you to take away from that is that short-lived assets are not the kind of investments that we're looking to take out debt for. So these have to be funded through operational funds. So what we're really talking about is creating a reserve fund so that over the life of the twenty-five, thirty years, you have enough, you're building up enough in your operational reserves to address those kinds of issues. And we look at that comprehensively so that you don't get in a situation, you know, as much as we can control that, obviously you can't control everything, where all of a sudden you have a two hundred, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollar hit because your piece of equipment has failed. We want to get you thinking about reserving, putting enough reserves away so that that timeframe when we want to replace that component before the end of its useful life, that it happens and you have the funds to do that and you're not scrambling to make that work. So, and we try to spread that evenly out so that when you look at the bottom line number, there isn't this huge discrepancy from year to year to year. What we're really looking for across the entire life of the schedule is consistency, whether that's kind of keeping it flat or growing at a certain rate, because this is just talking about costs. What the village needs to, I guess the next step of that is to ascertain how do you fund those? How do you develop your revenue? How do you develop your rates in order to account for that? So obviously, it's not, you know, it makes a lot more sense to set up an anticipation of investment that is on a steady rate so that you communicate that to your customers that they're not going to see a shock in their building from year to year to year because it's been accounted for in, over the life of the asset investment schedule. So it provides predictability, it provides consistency, and this is just a suggestion. It doesn't, we're not saying that the village is fixed to this particular schedule, but it gives you an idea of how much you might want to be setting aside for all these kinds of costs that will need to be incurred to maintain the plant into the future. So does that make sense?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Way too much information so far, I feel I don't.
I know, it's a lot.
No, it really is, I really, really appreciate it.
And, you know, I know that, you know, you probably want me to come in and present a much, you know, shorter version of this to the board meeting, but.
We need to understand it and.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense for you to get that, for me to stand here and I hug you, you know, make sure that you have, if there are any questions that you have after tonight that you can think of, or if you have a chance to read through the report, feel free to send them my way. Darren has my contact information, I'll leave my card there. My job here is to just give you an understanding of the complexity of this. My job here is to just give you an understanding of the complexity of this evaluation. Everything that's been involved in that so that you understand what you need to do really for it. Jake?
Yeah, I assume that debt service costs are calculated in there kind of based on historical, because I think we get pretty favorably raised in the cost. But I'm assuming these total costs and things aren't going to address unknowns, like if we were to have grants, if we were to have any other help on it like that.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't look at revenue at all.
Okay.
This is only expenditure. So however you choose to fund those, you know, whether you, for example, for your debt, if you decide to go out on your own, issue your own bonds or go through a funding agency, you know, that's not incorporated in it. The first step is to get you to understand how much is it going to cost to maintain your facility, your system. Then we can kind of look at, okay, what are the opportunities? But what this does do is it puts you in line to take advantage of your opportunities when they come out. So I don't know if you're familiar with the state, you know, they announced a $2.5 billion water wastewater fund this year, which wasn't available before. So that's going to be spread out over a number of years. But this year, they committed 250 million, split evenly between water wastewater. So there's $125 million available in grants and loans that wasn't there before. Now, the advantage of doing this is that you can then go to a funding agency like EFC and say, we've done our homework. And, you know, we know exactly what's discussed. Because although this isn't required yet, I've seen the questions that come from EFC about how is the community looking at investment? Because when you think, some communities think of EFC and funding agencies as just money pots. EFC looks at their job as a bank and they're providing you a mortgage. So they own this project until you've paid off your mortgage. So they want to make sure that you're good stewards of essentially what they're purchasing until such a point that you've paid off that debt. So that's how they want communities to start thinking about their facilities. So building an asset investment schedule, building a long-term plan about how you're going to maintain this will speak more favorably when you go to negotiate with funding agencies in the future. And there may come a time, I know that they're piloting an asset management program right now in 10 communities around the state. They may actually make this a requirement for funding in the future.
Now, in some of these grants that are available out there, how far in the process, I know from Jake's, Jake has shared with us, you have to have almost everything in place, know what you're going to do, have your funding in place, but not start, right? Then you apply for the loan, for the, the grant?
So it depends on the funding agency. And I can't speak to all the different ones.
Sure.
I'm familiar with a couple. I'm most familiar with the EFC revolving loan, loan program. So that's kind of split up between grants and loans. Whether or not you get a grant is typically dependent upon, first and foremost, your income level, the income level of the community. And then secondly, how well does your project score? So again, those communities that have serious problems with their treatment facilities, they score highly on the priority list. So what happens is when you produce an engineering report, you submit it to EFC, it gets on what's called the intended use, intended use plan. And EFC ranks all of the projects according to a list of criteria. And those criteria include, you know, what is the potential damage to the environment? You know, how bad are the facilities, all this kind of stuff. What they do then is they create what's called a project priority list and they work from the top down. So at the top of the projects that are currently under construction or under design, and then the next group is essentially those who are, fall into that top bracket. And at some point, the money runs out. That's called the subsidy, well, there's different lines. But essentially, the, the brake line is what they call the subsidy line. So what EFC will do for you is if you fall into that criteria or above that line, they will essentially underwrite 50% of the cost of the borrowing. So let's say the interest rate is 4.5%. They will essentially give you a 2.5% loan. And they receive their money from the federal government through the EPA's revolving loan. So different states administer it differently. What they use that capital for is to underwrite some of the, that's part of it. So there's some grow, some goes to grants, some goes to loans.
And do you know what period of time that loan will be for?
Typically, it's a 30-year loan.
Just like bonds would be.
Essentially, yeah. So what they do for you though is that even if you don't qualify for subsidized loan, if your project priority score is too low, EFC maintains a AAA bond rating. They, they take all of the different projects that are out there across the state and they essentially take a single borrowing out on Wall Street using their AAA issue bond rating. And because of that, they're able to get favorable market rates. What they call an EFC market rate is below what a typical municipality would be able to. Because, you know, I think a typical municipal bond rating is around BD. I, I don't know what the village's is, but.
Hard to say.
It's a, okay. So, but, you know, with AAA rating, they should be able to get you better interest rates than if you went on your own. Now, having said that, there are, there's a lot of administrative costs that go into managing an EFC project. And, you know, when the bond markets, you know, when they're low, when the interest rates are low, sometimes it's not worth going with it. If you compare, you know, apples to apples because.
That's a fixed rate though, is that correct?
It's a fixed rate. So they usually do short and long-term financing. So they'll give you short-term financing, whether it's in the form of a van or something else, just to get you through the construction of the project. And then as you get towards the end of the project, you know, they'll roll over into a 30-year fixed loan. But all of the projections that I have are based on a 4.5% market rate for, for debt service. So this is somewhat conservative, assuming that you don't qualify for any additional funding and also any grants, obviously. You have grants, that takes up, principally reduces your maximum debt.
You, you said 4.5% market rate. The other question is, on your projections, what rate of inflation have you worked into that?
I'm using an average of 3%.
3%?
So historically, I think that's what it's kind of been over the last 50 years or so. Now, obviously, you have year-to-year fluctuations or decade-to-decade fluctuations. We've kind of been in a, you know, in a run, I'm going to say, for the last 10 years. But historically, that's kind of been the growth rate. And, you know, we can play all these numbers, make it 4%, 2%, whatever. I think historically, 3% has been the norm from year to year. The last page, I think, in the handout that was printed out, it's in the text of the report, essentially summarizes this. And the other, the other thing that it does, it shows you like, this is page 43. It's table 7.1. So this summarizes this in a single table. And then if you look across, we've got debt service, the operation maintenance, short-lived asset reserve. And I actually got updated numbers, so I may, I revised the report and I've sent a revised report to Darren. I'm not sure if you have that, but it's relatively similar. But the two columns I want you to look at are the annual total and then the annual total per year. So you can see how, over the course of 25 years, that grows from 883, which is essentially what your current sewer fund budget looks like, to, at some point in the future, it's to 1.7. If you're inflating all of these things by 3%. Now, again, this is an academic exercise. We don't necessarily know whether it's going to be that 25 years from 2040. I'm sure most of you will not be in a position to care of that. But, you know, it's just to give you an idea of how this grows. And the last column, it's where we say EU. EU stands for Equivalent Welling. So essentially, this would be the impact to, to a typical residence. So how we do that is we break out residential flow and then commercial industrial flows are a multiple of residential flow. And that gives us, in this case, around about 8,000 EU. There's different ways to calculate it. But this kind of gives you a rough idea of the order of magnitude that you're talking about increasing people's bills by, over the life of the plant.
Okay, so the last line, then, if we told you, that would be per year.
So right now, you're roughly around about 110. The cost is roughly about $110 per unit. And by 2041, that will increase to over $300 per unit. So.
Which actually is a lot less than some communities right now in pure water, right?
So, but, you know, we, we can't foresee what may come down in the future. You may have a catastrophic event that, you know, you need to do. And this doesn't address any issues in your sewer system. This is looking specifically at treatment. So the cost of the sewer operations are included in this. But there's no, and it's inflated along with everything else. But there's no, there's no accommodation. For example, if you spend $15 million on INI in your system, that's not built into this. So any other investments that you have in your sewer isn't baked into this right now. It's just assumed that everything continues as it is moving forward.
I agree with the recommended.
So that's a lot to digest. And, you know, like I say, if there's any questions at all, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over anything in particular detail. You guys, I trust you guys a lot to let me know if I missed something or if I misspoke about something. John, do you have any questions?
We'll throw you under the bus, don't worry about it.
Okay, thanks. Maybe I shouldn't turn up for the next meeting. Like I say, I appreciate your opportunity to join in. And, you know, I mean, this has been a very, you know, very interesting project to work on. You know, I appreciate the village trusting us to work on that. And I, but we continue to work for you in the near future.
I was really interested, even at the town, at the town, when you're just listening to what you had to say. It really helped a lot. So, but it's a lot to digest.
I, I had a second.
Literally.
Oh, 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 geez. Put you back in the kitchen.
I do have a question. Is there a plan to try to see, once that digester gets back up and running, is there a plan to try to put the ferric chloride in later than it is now? On some means, or is that not?
So I haven't really touched upon how we would go through the process of deciding construction. So there are certain things that are recommended in here that we wouldn't necessarily, although it's recommended, we'd want to take baby steps as to how it's actually implemented. So ferric chloride is one of those things where, even though it's applied at a point where it potentially could cause issues, there, the way it's set up, it may work better than the way that it is currently. So for example, because it goes into the influent channel that then goes into the aerated or pre-aeration tanks, the aeration actually mixes that very well. So maybe you get very good phosphorus removal because you have that mixing. If you apply that downstream of the tripping filter, you don't necessarily have that. And it may mean to have less efficient phosphorus removal. Now, phosphorus, I don't think is a concern. So I'm not necessarily worried about that too much because I think we do a pretty good job of treating for that. But something that might be a concern is, you know, I mentioned, you know, looking at saving energy by, you know, turning off the blowers to the pre-aeration tanks. Now, you may find that there's a drop-off in BOD treatment, for example. And that bleeds through the plant and then your F-bord numbers start to go up. So if that happens, then obviously, you know, that's something that you want to keep. You know, so, you know, there's some trial and error that's involved. And obviously, you know, you have very competent operators who know how to work with that and, and try things out. But yeah, I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend going gomho and doing everything. There will be a process and it will depend upon which component we're looking at as to how we would develop that.
With the, with the ferric, from my understanding, you know, we talked with Jeff, the last chief operator, you know, the reason why they had the ferric where it was, was to get the proper mixing. It was, they needed a time to get the proper mixing to get through the system.
So, so sometimes there are trade-offs, you know. You know, maybe that makes more sense or maybe that is what works best for the plant.
And then for, I mean, for the aeration, if we were to shut the air off, one thing about when you have the air on is it breaks up all the greases that come in. If we shut the air off, it's just going to kick over. And then it's going to almost be manually pushed over or.
You know, and almost, you know, big reason why, I don't see many facilities that do pre-aeration. But I understand that those that do, sometimes odors is one of the reasons why they do that. So, you know, that might be.
I mean, if we did it, I mean, you would definitely have a cake on the top and in the, in the heat, the sun, you'd have odor. Might be best to keep that.
At the rate we're going right now.
I'd only like to say one more thing. Once we get a major component like that primary digester back up and running, we haven't taken into account, he's going to see a difference and the numbers drop significantly. And the whole plant will run much more efficiently. That was a major component that had to be fixed. And accordingly, he will see different numbers.
So, and yeah, that definitely, that definitely has had an impact on the data that we've been reviewing. Now, we, that's the reason why we go back, you know, five, six years before that because we understand, as I mentioned right at the beginning, that the plan isn't operating the way that it should be operated because of these issues. Some of the things that we saw potentially is that because you don't have the digester, you're not able to waste as much sludge. So that means you're holding more sludge in the final clarifiers. And that potentially is leading to breakthrough of solids into the F-bord. So that may lead to some of the data that you're seeing. You're not operating the plant the way it's designed to operate. So, you know, it makes sense that, you know, you don't get as efficient treatment as you would expect to see if everything is running smoothly. But that's a great point, you know. And it's difficult to do this evaluation during the process while, you know, some major components aren't available because we can't see what it looks like from a normal perspective. So we've had to do some extrapolation and say, you know, this is how we think, this is the best characterization of what the treatment plant should be doing, given the data that we have.
Personally, I think also the construction, the head of the plant, the ability to hold and introduce the additional septicage in a controlled way will allow, so that there's not an overload and bam, and then it goes off and overloaded again. More consistent, I think that would be very.
That may, that may actually help. That may help the village be able to take on more septicage too.
Yes.
Because if you hold it without necessarily worrying about shop loading it, then you can, you know, you can still receive it. But you just don't have to address that in a peak, like something that will be smoothed out over time. So that may increase your capacity to generate a percentage as well. I don't want to say that, you know, a given. And, you know, maybe, you know, from an operator's standpoint, they may be more, you know, more concerned about just making sure that things run. And then, you know, if there's an additional capacity you can take on, then that will help. You know, it's, it's something that we can definitely look at. And we'll look at for design if that's how the village wants to proceed.
Another thing about the, our sample line, you know, we mentioned that our sample line was, would pick up the side supernate. And the reason why we did that, because it used to be before, like, you know, it used to be probably, right now, it's like 10 feet into the channel, maybe. It used to be before that, but our water was too clean. You know, you have to make 80% removal. So we had to basically stretch it out a little further so we could actually take our.
So this, this is a quirk of Spedys permits. No, it's a great point. So.
The percentage dropped, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got to have 80% removal and we were too clean.
So, so in addition to having fixed limits on what you can discharge, there is a provision for biological treatment, essentially that tells you how efficient your treatment plant is working. Now, most treatment plants that I've seen are not seeing the level, the strength of wastewater coming into their influent than what typically we would design for or what I assume these, these plants were designed for. So the plant is being penalized for not getting that removal efficiency when, in reality, what's really important is what's coming out the other end. So to me, it doesn't make sense. So to me, it doesn't make sense to have that as a permit condition, because you can't control what comes into your facility, you can only control what happens within your facility. So if you don't have high BODs coming in, for whatever reason that is, you should actually be happy about that, because it means you're going to have lower BODs going out. But that's not how the permit works. And, you know, like I say, it's not a stipulation in the significant other user permit that the village has with the town, so from a legal perspective, I don't think that is a concern to you. But like I said, the D C reviews the plant as if it had its own speedies permit, so, you know, these are the kind of arguments that we get into. Personally, if, if I had to choose between getting the right numbers versus getting this efficiency, I would be more concerned about getting the right numbers, and making sure we're doing what needs to be done.
I think they added that, added that, which I agree with you about the percentages in that, I think it was in there, I know I heard of the plan out there, that if you got a twenty-nine, if you're able to get down to twenty-nine, great, if you got a twenty-eight, you treated it too much, and you were wasting money. That was their view on it.
That's...
And it's a little backwards, I think, you know, I think it'd say it's better yet, but I think that's a feeling that some of them had, so they probably put that in there to say, you know, we're not going to let you, you know, it comes in at fifty, right? They're going to let you, you just get down to twenty-nine, you can do better than that, so let's get better.
Right, I mean, in reality, there's a flaw to how the F-12 can be, how, how low that the OD number is. And the closer you are to that, the less efficient you are, right? So, but it doesn't mean that that number is any higher, it's just, you know, you didn't start off with a high number, did you? So, yeah, it's, it's a quirk. And, you know, if it were, to me, I would argue that point of the D C if they tried to push it, but I'd much rather, like I said, see real numbers and evaluate the performance. It does help to know how efficient your plan is, because if you, for example, see the efficiency drop off suddenly, then that may indicate that you have something going on in your plan that you want to address. But, I mean, these guys are there every day, looking at it, maintaining, operating, they know when things are working, when they're not working. They do a great job of running the plan, maybe some other communities don't, I can't say, say that for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darren, would you like me to leave these with you, so that you can carry over with your, your pleasure?
I don't mind, especially with the...
Yeah, that one would be...
I went through the two-hundred-and-twenty-nine pages of the reception of some of the data, I went very quickly, but...
It's safe to leave.
Well, these guys didn't have the opportunity to watch the review.
I apologize.
Through it all, but...
I wasn't able to get it to you, like I said, I was looking for updating like this, let me show you that I've got it, so I can get it to you. I think it's a start, so it's a draft version right there, please, you know, send any others questions, the things I need to revise. But we can talk about when...
How long is it to stay up?
If you want to say, get me comments or films, whatever sort of... And I expect to see those back, so I can clarify my satisfaction if I may afford this at the same time.
I have a question, though. When the digester is re-carried, and then you have two, that's correct?
Correct, yeah.
Did they put more stress on their ready corroded equipment that is out there, or less?
You mean in the other digester that has been? So I don't know what the inside of the digester, the secondary digester, looks like. The way the process works is, they actually work in series, they don't work in parallel. The primary digester is the one where, if I believe, that's where the gas generation comes from in that digester. The secondary tank is really more the holding tank, and it shouldn't see the same kind of effects that the first one is. Now, actually, the secondary digester way back when was the primary digester, and then when the plant was operating in the sixties, they kind of flipped it around, they built a bigger tank, and the secondary tank became the holding tank. But I don't know if anyone really knows what the condition is, like inside, do you have gas piping in the secondary?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so that potentially could be a concern there, too, but we're not using that piping to collect gas, correct?
That is not true, we do collect that gas.
Okay.
But it's not, we're not using a heat exchanger right now, so we can't burn it, because everything's interconnected, and we don't want to introduce oxygen and gas at the same time, so we have to be very careful about that.
So even when the primary's running, you collect methane off of it?
Of both of them. If we did lay it off, it would be a big flying saucer going across the hill.
I guess there would.
But, yeah, I mean, one of the recommendations is to essentially replace the gas safety protocol as well, in conjunction with replacing the boiler.
Here's the gist of it, is that once the big one gets back online, the little one can kind of be cleaned out a little bit by itself, it should be cleaned out thoroughly like the big one, but we need to be on a more stable schedule of cleaning, this went on way too long, and there were hairballs the size of sheepdogs in there, so we were trying almost to defeat ourselves because it kept plugging, and, and we were trying to get through it, but in the end, we had to do what we had to do.
I think to the tradition that you had that led to that in the primary digester was not, I mean, it's not something that's typical of operation. So we believe that a lot of the rags and stuff that actually made it into the primary digester went in there because, up until, was it the mid-two thousands? It had a half-screening, so a lot of that just got...
Wasn't even, no, we took out the influent building, which it was straight piped to all the primaries. There was no screening.
So all that stuff that now is removed, because you have that screen in your preliminary treatment process, it shouldn't mean that there's, you shouldn't get any of that stuff anywhere. It should be a lot better. So we don't anticipate that that kind of situation will occur again, but I don't know that's inside the secondary digester. So, you know, until you peek in there, it could be just as bad. I just don't know.
Thank you.
Very interesting. The motion to adjourn is nine o'clock.
I like that motion.
Carol, are they...
Trustee Lancy? Or Lauer?
Aye.
Are they doing a nine-one?
Trustee Alito?
We are, I, if you want to keep that on, I mean...
Your buyer?
Aye.
Yes.
There are two things that I would like to make a mention of, if you can read that out. Two things that I would make a mention of, first of all, the next village board meeting is the fourteenth, but the twenty-eighth, September twenty-eighth, there will be a special proclamation issued that day, it will be village band day in the village, I will ask them to come in, it will be making proclamation to that. I was able to go to the last band concert a week ago, and I have up on our website one picture, and if you search around, you should be able to find a video of one of their, one of their numbers. But that will be on the twenty-eighth, along with, I think, approval of the, or at least looking at the welcome package as well.
Yep.
And also, coming up on Monday, is the memorial veterans' park, there'll be the nine-eleven memorial service, and that will start at seven P M. So I hope to see you there.
I'll be there.
I believe that the weather will be favorable to us Saturday, Sunday, and Monday until Tuesday, when it will rain again, I believe, so. So I thank you for that, and have a lovely...
Thanks, Daryl.
You're welcome. See you all there.
Thank you, everybody. Think we can all be there?